Marquis Dawson indicted and on trial corrupt current price and Heather worthless had have done absolutely nothing to stop this horrible act. In my opinion wording should be added to this ridiculous motion that would fund an investigation as to why these black Uncle Tom clowns sitting here are doing absolutely nothing to stop the assaults on black women. What do you think, Ramon? Number 20.
Specials, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Ms. President. Out of the rebuttals of caution, I'm accusing myself from item 26 because I have a landlord.
All right, item 26.
Good morning, council members. My name is Alec Missropian and I'm here on behalf of Bisfet LA, a coalition partner of the LA Alliance for Tourism, Jobs and Progress. Council members, the city charter is clear. Signature verification for the tourism worker wage referendum were due last Friday, September 5th. That deadline was missed by three days and with it, public trust was broken. What's worse, the numbers don't add up. Our coalition submitted over 100,000 valid signatures, yet the verification process produced sky-high match rates for our opponents and record-high failure rates for us. That's never been seen before and it reeks of foul play. We've asked the district attorney to investigate because the people of LA deserve a fair, transparent process, not one clouded by shade and secrecy. The business community is ready to fight for fairness, protect jobs, and make the city livable again, but only if the democratic process is respected. Thank you.
Suppose you got a phone call saying there was a bomb in a certain spot, what would you do? Would you take a modest action like sending someone with binoculars to have a look? Or would you wait for a few more phone calls before you did something? Of course, you wouldn't wait for more phone calls. That would be negligent. And suppose people are victims of extortion, threatened with violence if they go to the police? Would you demand a swift and thorough investigation at the merest whiff of a threat? Or would you wait for multiple police reports? Again, any normal person would view delay as negligence. But your actual response to my complaint was negligent. The police are refusing to make required records and to seriously investigate allegations of extortion, and you are refusing to provide oversight. As I've said, the only solution is to ask the governor to send a handful of investigators from the National Guard to look into police misconduct, yet you've refused to make this modest request and you've refused...
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Agenda item one is about street lighting. All I have to say is, what's going on with street lighting on 7th Street and Alvarado? There's a 20-foot sign accusing the mayor of telling the mayor, if you retire, we'll turn the lights on. I'd like to know why. Okay? I'm going to public comment now.
Okay, so you have one minute.
My back of my shirt says that Detective Gayheart said, "My son's case is unresolved." I went with the fellow that here that acts like he knows everything, and he's actually a cop. He wants to, it's a cop wannabe, and he believed the cops when the people in Infernal Fed says, "My son's case is not resolved." My son's, my son's case is not resolved. They said it's resolved. Okay. I want to talk about another book called Transhuman Genocide. We're trying to reach the author, supposed author, who is a senator of Wisconsin.
I'm sorry, can you pause your time? Mr. Herman, you have been here for all of three seconds and you have managed to interrupt this meeting and disrupt it already. Please do not disrupt the other public speakers when you're entering the room or any time during this meeting. This is your first and only warning. If you do it again, you'll be subject to rule seven, rule 12, and subject to removal and exclusion. I'm sorry, Ms. Elliott. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, we're trying to reach this guy, Ron Johnson. He's very conservative. I'm the opposite. But I hope that he'll speak on it. I'm not going to say anything negative to him until it's all over. Then I'll tell my heartfelt doubts about what's going to go on, but we're going to try to do it in here even. Thank you.
I'll speak to the public at this clown show of incompetence on all available items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Okay. None of the items on this kindergarten agenda by Sleazy Marquis Dawson and these council clowns address any other problems that their incompetence and corruption created. Number 15 by indicted racist Asian John LAPD Lee is to keep a pool open on weekends. In my opinion, this item should receive a no vote. If indicted and on trial and on bail with additional charges corrupt embezzler polygamist current price is allowed to vote. In my opinion, an indicted and on trial corrupt embezzlement polygamist that is on trial for voting on his wife's City of Los Angeles business should not be sitting there voting on these items nor the public city business. 16 by Demwit Nithia Ramins for tree trimming. 17 by incompetent Monica Lewinsky Rodriguez is for graffiti cleanup. 18 by Bob genocide Bloomfield wants a stillbirth awareness day. In my opinion, there should be an anti-genocide of women and children of in Gaza language added to this motion. 19 by Demwit Nithia Ramin wants an award for an assault, unsolved assault. This motion is a joke when black women are 4% of the LA population, but black women comprise over 50% of the aggravated assaults in Los Angeles. In my opinion, we should not add that statistic wording to this motion. Wordings should also be added to the investigate why Sleazy Marquis Dawson indicted and on trial corrupt current price and Heather worthless had have done absolutely nothing to stop this horrible act. In my opinion, wording should be added to this ridiculous motion that would fund an investigation as to why these black Uncle Tom clowns sitting here are doing absolutely nothing to stop the assaults on black women. What do you think, Ramon? Number 20 by McCosker, who wants to keep a pool open a couple of more days. What a wonderful idea to solve the tens of thousands of homeless people in the Los Angeles, City of Los Angeles. 21 by Soto Martinez is for an everyone day. What a brilliant idea that would solve the $1 billion budget deficit created when these clowns gave the LAPD a $1 billion budget increase last year. I want to know why nobody else thought of this brilliant everyone day. I want wording added to this item that would truly include everyone like the tens of thousands of homeless these incompetent clowns have created. I want wording in this item to include everyone like the thousands of people whose homes burned due to Karen Bass, Sleazy Dawson, and the rest of this clown council's own incompetence. In my opinion, every item on this kindergarten agenda is an example of when you hire clowns, you get a circus. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Public when you hire clowns, you get the circus of corrupt incompetence. Sleazy Marquis Dawson again has absolutely no transformative items on today's agenda. What a clown. Sleazy Marquis Dawson CD8 has the highest incarceration rate, the highest homeless rate, and CD8 has the highest unemployment rate in the entire United States, over 12.5%. CD8 is a near-complete food desert. Sleazy D has spent over $10 million on luxury offices for himself while tens of thousands are homeless. Dawson was appointed by the petty pink place corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Kluklukskorion, a legendary fool. Criminally insane current price has been indicted on additional charges for voting on his wife's city contracts and polygamy. $1 billion budget emergency, homeless epidemic emergency, 275 billion fire damage emergency, and Sleazy D and these $20,000 per month clowns. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I ask this question only so you can ask yourselves this. How do you feel about the 28th Amendment, the Equal Rights Amendment now?
So if you, can you hold his time really quick? If you have something to hand or circulate around, please make sure to give it to the sergeants after your public comment, or if you'd like to, you can give it to them now.
No, 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 no. No. Don't worry about that. This is going to be taken care of later. I have a proposal for this whole ICE immigration situation, and it's the president's idea. Why not sell visas to the immigrants and the people undocumented, you know, at a graduated price, you know, for how many years you've been here, this and that? Because there's no reason for everybody to be chasing everybody around town. It's just not right. Why not just sell visas to the people who earnestly want to stay here and do the right thing and, you know, a five-year visa, $5,000, you know, five years, re-up it, get it done again? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Javon Houston. I'm a member of SCIU and an airport worker at Los Angeles Airport. And I just want to take the time out to thank each and every council member that has supported us in the living wage ordinance and defended the workers of getting a decent wage here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much for all your time, your hard work, for sticking your leg out for us. We really appreciate it. Also, we just, we are tired of waiting. We are, we got this referendum passed by giving the workers a decent wage. Now it's time to pay up. Please don't make us wait any longer. It's time. We worked, we waited over two and a half years. It's time to pay up now. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Father Mark Hallahan, and I live in the wonderful District One of the City of Los Angeles with our amazing councilwoman Eunice Hernandez. And I am here as part of this group here behind me who are standing because they won a great victory, and you helped them to win that victory. And I'm speaking on behalf of the faith community, particularly clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, who have walked with this group from the very beginning. And we prayed with them, and we cried with them, and we rejoiced with them, and today we are grateful with them that you have supported this amazing historic wage increase, which is going to have ramifications throughout this country. Thank you for that. This is so important. And they need to be receiving that raise yesterday. So we need to urge you to make sure that this happens as soon as possible. Again, we in the faith community are grateful. We will continue walking with our friends here, our brothers and sisters, and be there and available for whatever they need because we are a strong coalition, and LA needs to know how strong we are, and this is proof of it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jason Enright. I'm a member of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, and I'd like to uplift testimony from one of our residents in District Two, who because of work can't make it out to regular public city council meetings. Chris H., tenant in District Two, said, "My wife and I have lived in Valley Village for over 10 years in an RSO unit. When we moved in, our rent was $1,250, and it's now $1,737 a month. As it increases year-over-year by 3% to 6%, we understand this is still below the market rate, but it is an almost 40% increase since we've moved in. As a teacher, my wife's income hasn't increased 40% in that time. My freelancing can't keep up either. A 3% cap, 0% floor, it's 60% CPI for the RSO is more than fair." Council members, we urge you again to cap the rent at 3%. Thank you. Have a great day.
Buenos dias. Este, mi nombre es Maria Santos Gonzalez. Trabajo para Fly Food Group desde hace nueve años. Para mi... Okay.
Yes, hello. My name is Maria Santos Gonzalez. I've been working for Fly and Food Group for more than nine years.
Para mi el sueldo olímpico me ayudaría porque la hipoteca de mi casa ha subido a 3,600. Además...
The Olympic wage would help me a lot because my mortgage for my house has gone up to $3,600.
Además, ahorita estoy recuperándome de un cáncer que tuve que estar ausente.
And right now, I have been recovering from cancer, which has caused me to not be there.
Por unos meses, ahorita gracias a Dios estoy de regreso trabajando fuerte como siempre.
And as of a few months ago, thankfully, I have been able to go back and work.
Sin embargo, por mi ausencia debido al cáncer tengo muchas deudas que pagar.
However, due to my absence because of having cancer, I have many debts that I must pay.
Este sueldo para mi significa poder seguir viviendo gracias a los consejos, a los consejos que nos apoyaron.
However, this wage would permit me to continue being able to support myself and living. Thank you to the council members who have supported it.
Ahora es tiempo para que las compañías nos paguen lo que nos deben.
Now it is time for the companies to pay us what they owe us, and that is it.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Y estoy muy feliz porque el sueldo olímpico será implementado. Luchamos y ganamos.
I am very happy because the Olympic wage will be implemented. We have fought and we have won.
Este sueldo olímpico para mi significa poder seguir viviendo en Los Angeles.
And this Olympic wage for me means that I will be able to continue living in Los Angeles.
Nuestra renta acaba de subir 300 dólares. Ahora pagamos 2,000.
Our rent has just gone up to 3, by $300, and now we pay 2,000.
Y lo que me sobra de mi sueldo lo mando a mi familia en Honduras que depende de mí.
And the extra money that I have from my wage, I send it to Honduras for my family that depends on me.
Gracias a todos los que nos apoyaron y esperamos que las compañías paguen como se debe.
And thank you to all who have supported us. We hope that the companies will pay us what they owe us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
All right, so let's start with 20, 21, 22, and then general. Yeah, okay, so start with item 20. [singing] That year, you and I were the same age, young, enjoying the green music. But to create the dream world, you turned away and walked into the storm. I saw a thousand adorable you, not looking back, smiling, leaving. How many youthful shadows disappeared in the night,换来晨曦? I look at the stars you saw, through time, I see you again. You knew the smile you gave before you turned. Now, let's move on to item number 21. I look at the stars you saw, your feet have changed to a new color. You stayed in the wind, so bright, in my heart, in my heart. I held my hand, I said the same誓言, in the dark, your smile was so clear. You said you never regretted your life, dedicated to this vast land. I wish I could hold your hand, tell you, everything was dusting. A hundred years ago, you dreamed of the new China, so beautiful. I look at the stars you saw, through time, I see you again. You knew the smile you gave before you turned. Let's move on to item number 22. I look at the stars you saw, your feet have changed to a new color. You stayed in the wind, so bright, in my heart, in my heart. I've smelled the wind you smelled, the wind, the air is full of pain. But I was like dreaming, empty hands, heart also. I've smelled the wind you smelled, have you ever seen the same scenery? I'm stirring the clock, leaving the wrong time, all empty. Now, it's time for general public comment. So as we are aware, whatever occurs on the news, that they are, Supreme Court just ruled that all of the ICE operation and Homeland Security operation will resume, will continue in the streets of Los Angeles and including every other places in the United States. And we call it as a big win. That's the reason why that we must elect Councilmember Spindler in the year of 2026. Because other than that, the Los Angeles will remove all the law enforcement officers on the street. The gang bangers will take over the street. All of the looter, rioter, repast, active shooter will take over the street. The only reason why we continue to make sure we have law and order in the street of LA is to make sure President Donald Trump remain in the office and make sure we continue to elect Councilmember Spindler, so we will always have law enforcement ICE on our street.
To the previous speaker, again, as we've offered multiple times in the past, if you would like to request a foreign language interpreter, you are more than welcome to do so. Just please let us know or please let the clerk's office know about 48 hours in advance, and we will do our best to accommodate that. Thank you.
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi. Everyone should have gotten one of these. I sent it out.
Actually, I'm sorry. Pause his time. We're going to hold your time. Mr. Herman, there is absolutely no reason for you to be standing directly behind the public speaker. You are trying to distract me, and you have been successful and actually disrupted my ability to listen to the public speaker. You have previously been warned. So, Mr. President, if you would like, Mr. Herman is eligible for removal. Pursuant to rule 12 and 7, you are removed, Herman. Please exit the chambers at this time.
This is fucking bullshit. He told me to stand there.
You continued to disrupt the meeting and harold racial slurs at me. You are disruptive to the meeting.
No! No! Bullshit! You make a stand there!
Mr. Herman, you have been ordered out of the room. You have distracted this body multiple times today, even if you were told to stand, that there is no reason for you to do those faces and attempt to distract and disrupt this proceeding. I would also note for the record that you are still disrupting this proceeding even after having been ordered removed. The only thing you have to do in order to provide public comment in front of this body is to not disrupt the meeting. I'm sorry, Speaker.
Okay, I'm going to call, I'm here to talk about LAPD hurting peaceful protesters starting in June. I'm showing this hand because in the paper that I gave you guys, I gave, the voter clerk has 18 of these. Look at this image. Someone lost a finger on June 14th. On June 14th, someone lost a finger, okay? And you know what? On June 24th, city council members voted for it, except for city council, actually, NMPA. Why did you vote for $17.3 million for LAPD overtime? Why did you vote for that? I understand all the other votes. Because they're cowards and don't care about peaceful protesters. Marquis, why did you vote for that? You have blood on your hands. Literally, look at the pictures. Someone's head got injured. Look at this picture. Look at the pictures, guys. You have proof, and you vote for it.
Next speaker. Right, so Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Diego Boyle, and I am speaking on behalf of the Undergraduate Student Association Council at UCLA. I serve as the 2025-2026 Academic Year President at UCLA. With the 2028 Olympics approaching, Westwood and Los Angeles as a whole will welcome thousands of tourists and generate millions in revenue. But while our city profits, the workers making this global event possible, many of them students, service workers, and their parents, and members of our community are being left behind. Student workers, despite facing rising costs of living and increased demands on campus, will not see Olympic-level wages or benefits. That's why we stand as 35, 34,000 undergraduates at UCLA. We stand in full solidarity with our union brothers, sisters, and siblings, fighting for a $30 Olympic wage. Economic justice means Olympic profits should not come at the expense of workers. Thank you, and let's fight for livable, affordable Westwood.
Speaker, your time has expired. So, oh, we got one more. Yes, ma'am, and we can get the mic?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I, I didn't study this item, so I'm just going to go with public comment.
It's okay, a lot of, okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
But I think she has to go over there. Yes, I'm here to tell you that, you know, with the cult of Scientology, that reports are being made, and you're going to have to take it seriously, and, you know, that there's no getting around it at this point. And just to let you know that I am not suicidal, that if, you know, they are going to try to, like what they did with the Masterson case, try to dismantle it, whatever, it's not going to happen. And, but you guys need to be on alert. Where, you know, people are tired of any kind of human trafficking, any kind of abuse of elders, children, of wages, of everything. Enough's enough. The victims are coming forward. They're going to keep coming forward. There's going to be a day of reckoning, and you guys are going to have to wake up to that fact. There, it's, it's over. It's, it's coming, and that's that. And with that being said, remember, Mr. Lee, you still owe me an apology. Shout out to Smoke and Scan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Nazarian?
Thank you, Council President. If public comment time is done...
I think we got one more speaker.
I'll speak after public comment is done.
All right, we're feeling magnanimous today. All right, you have one minute. Good, good morning. Which items?
Thank you. Hi, just general public comment. I wanted to attach with what Ada LA was just talking about, the internal minglings of Scientology and their money and their affiliation with the city. I was a child born and raised in the cult of Scientology. I was a member as a child, doing slave indentured servant work on public streets and public sidewalks, under the control and disguise that Scientology was helping the neighborhood and being good PR for the city, which is not true. It is all a recruitment tactic. I wanted to express, Child X book here is going to be given to a bunch of you. This is a child's born and raised story from Los Angeles as a baby. I was then later born in 1986. There's many books I have in my bag of, these are internal members that left 20, 40 years of being in this cult. And this is the evidence, criminal evidence, the, the financial ties, the, all the interminglings between the LAPD and the city. Please do your research. No...
Speaker, your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Nazarian is on the board.
Thank you so much. I did just want to, I know that in some meetings, we've been acknowledging some of the impacts of immigration raids in our district up top, and we didn't do that today, but I did want to flag that even before the Supreme Court verdict in Council District Four, we had two incidents last week, including a raid at the Studio City Hand Car Wash. It's a icon, iconic car wash. Multiple workers were detained. We are still waiting for information on their whereabouts. And Sharare Mogadam, who works with her husband at Elegant Balloons, which is a really beloved balloon shop in Studio City, was detained. She is a green card holder, working her way towards citizenship, and she's been detained by the authorities under questionable pretenses. So I just wanted to underscore the continued impact of these issues on our city, including in our council district. And I hope that as the Supreme Court decision potentially foretells a change and a deepening of what had been relatively paused over the last few weeks, that we can move some of the urgent motions that were put forward by this council in the days after the initial set of raids through this body, that we can see responses from LAPD on both responses to immigration raids as well as protests, which we may see more of. And I think we have to make sure that we're ready to respond to these issues with keeping our residents' safety at the forefront of every response that we have as a city. So I want to thank you, Council President, for offering space in this council for airing these stories and telling these stories and recognizing the horrors, but also ask, request that we continue to push our city to be prepared to respond to what seems like will be another escalation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Ramon, and thank you for raising that. I think yesterday was perhaps one of the darkest days in the history of our country, where our highest court essentially legalized the practice that had previously been known as slave catching, that went away shortly after the fall of the South in the, in the Civil War. And we're now in a situation where the Supreme Court said, these folks who are, we're not even clear they're law enforcement officers, can decide... can decide someone is an illegal immigrant by their race, by the language they're speaking, or the job that they're doing." Um, and so we want to make sure we mark this day in our city and, uh, may Los Angeles continue to be the capital of the resistance. And thank you to all the members. I don't think there's a member of this council that did not put out a statement within hours of that decision. So thank you to every member of this council and our city attorney and, uh, city controller and mayor for, uh, showing a united front, uh, against this assault on our city and also, uh, democracy in our, uh, country.